Township of Howell Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting, Monday, April 23rd, 2018. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open, adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner: First, on January 9th, 2018, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Tri-Town News; Second, on January 9th, 2018, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the Township of Howell; Third, on January 9th, 2018, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits which are on your right at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77.
Here.
Mr. Hughes?
Here.
Mr. Mertens?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mr. Posh?
Here.
Mr. San Clemente?
Here.
Mr. Orozco?
Here.
Mr. Moretti?
Here.
And Chairman Nansen?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Y'all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Tropple, Professor, very good. You swear the testimony of this evening, the whole truth, and the truth about yourself. The record should reflect that tonight we have Helen C. Cavett, correct, as the planner, Mr. Mallon, and Matt Allen all sworn to be evil. Thank you, sir. Approval of Guinness, regular meeting, March 26th, 2018. All voters, Amata, Hughes, Mertens, O'Donnell, Orozco, Moretti, Moretti, and Posh. Do I have the motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Mr. O'Donnell, second by Mr. Moretti. You ready?
Mr. Amata?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
And Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Get it straight. Keep getting...
You're getting there.
You're getting there. I keep wanting to say Mario Andre.
Mario Andre. I'll take that. I'll definitely take that.
No vouchers.
Correspondence?
I do have correspondence. The first item is an email I received from Allison Serani. She is the deputy clerk, and she is in charge of the financial disclosure forms. She asked me to please send everybody a reminder about doing your financial disclosure, so I did send a reminder today, but I also told her I would tell you tonight. If you haven't seen an email from Allison Serani, look in your junk mail folder. It may go there. It's on your township email. If you have any questions, you need to contact Allison. She has all the information on it, and they have to be done by April 30th, which is next Monday. Otherwise, they've been getting very aggressive with fines, and I believe the fines start at $100. So you want to make sure you take care of this this week. The other item is a letter from Jason Ritty. He is the attorney for Cream Puff Farms, which was on tonight's agenda, and he has asked that this application be carried to June 25th with no further notice, and he has granted the board an extension through July 24th to act on this matter.
Is anyone in the audience case number VA-17-19, seeing our hands? This case will be carried to June 25th, 2018 with no further notice. Extension time, July 24th, 2018.
And I have no other correspondence, but Freehold Church of Christ, which is also on tonight's agenda, had to be rescheduled. They had a problem with their notices, so we will not be hearing that one tonight either.
Do we have a date for that yet?
Yes, I believe we do, but they didn't do a notice, so they have to notice.
Is anyone in the audience for case number VA-18-1, Freehold Church of Christ?
They're going to be June 11th, just for information.
Is... We get a... Okay. July 24th, extension of the time.
Yes.
Okay. June 11th with notice.
Yes.
Okay. Case number VA-18-1, Freehold Church of Christ will be carried to June 11th with notice.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
Next case up, case number VA-18-08, L&amp;M Management Company. Certificate of non-conformity. Applicant for L&amp;M Management Company, who is applicant for owner seeking certificates of non-conformity for various what? Applicant wishes to bifurcate this application, thereby seeking one certificate of non-conformity. Let me go ahead and bring that up if I can back up.
Or we can do it after, either one.
Okay. Just don't let me see.
No.
Okay. Certificate of non-conformity for block number 144 Lot 77 for an existing storage warehouse building. Separate certificate of non-conformity for Lot 77.
Oh, I wasn't sure.
Block 144, this lady is pre-existing non-conformity user, single-family home, single-family residential, retail, retail service, warehouse, warehouse retail, warehouse line industrial office, storage and multi-family residential. All lots are on the easterly side of US Highway 9 in Congress. Nine hours feet north of West Palm Beach. Extension due August 3rd. Mr. Mayor.
Chairman. Field Mayor, Sonneblake Parker in Selvers for the applicant, L&amp;M Management Corp. Initially, when I had filed... First of all, Mr. Howard had required us to proceed here because we had an application for a warehouse user on Lot 77, which is, if you've looked at any of your materials there as such, is one warehouse. Lot 76 has a whole grouping of 10 different areas that are warehouse and retail commercial and that. In any event, it was Lot 77. We had the former tenant moved out. We had a new tenant ready to move in. We went ahead and filed for the permit, and if you look at your screen there, you'll see this. We're now talking about, I'm talking about Lot 77, which is the lot on the left. The lot line actually is right where those cars are. That separates the two lots. And so we advised us that we needed to file for this certificate as such. I did. But however, at the same time, look at Lot 76, and there is actually approximately 10 warehouse units on that lot. So if we're going to come before you and spend the time and money to do this as such, I decided that we should really come for both properties with separate applications because we need really some kind of decision to be made on Lot 77 tonight. If we can do Lot 76 also and get that done, and everybody is satisfied, we'd like to have that also. However, if for some reason you can't, we can't get through that, you know, then at least we can determine what we can do with the tenants waiting to move into Lot 77. And so I filed, and at that time I filed, I also filed because we have two other lots within this 50-some acre parcel that have houses on them, okay? Single-family houses as such. And in discussing it with Mr. Howard as such, he didn't know if that was necessary to do that, but the point of it is originally when I submitted, I did. And I said also at that time, and that's what, this is what Mr. Mallon did review, I said, "If you don't grant us the certificate, then we, in the alternative, we were looking for a use variance for these various buildings." Mr. Mallon did his review and had that nice long letter, and I said, "My God, what's in this letter?" And I realized, and he advised me also, the reason he had done all of that was if we were going for use variance for all of these different units as such, he would have to complete, and he did, he did a complete analysis of what would be required and what was there and all. I said, "No, no, no, no. We want to keep this simple. This property, both of these properties have been there since the '70s, okay? And we're going to discuss and testify tonight as a continuing string of users on and being the same type of users, you know? We're willing to go ahead and try to get your certifications, and if you don't, and we have to come back to do a use variance or so, so be it. We'll do that at a later date." So I withdrew the use variance application, and I clearly stated that even though these all had been filed together, we wanted to do Lot 77 as a separate application from Lot 76. The one on the left versus the one on the right as such. So that's...
Which one? 76 is the one on the left.
No. 76 is the one on the right.
77 is the one on the left.
77 is the one on the left. That is correct. So that's what we did. We changed it. Our submissions have been made subsequent to this, all on that basis, and we will do that one first tonight with your approval as such. Now, at the same time, there was one other thing, and that was, at the time when I was filing and I had to file everything with you, there is a Lot 80, which is to the left. You can't see it on there. And there's a house on it. It's been there again since the '70s. But there's two smaller buildings with it, and at the time that I was filing, I wasn't sure of what they were used for, and I was not able to get a hold of Mr. Metz, so I wasn't able to determine it. determines after I sent that in that we were probably going to do that one also, Lot 80, that, no, it's a garage and a shed for the house. That's all it is, and there's nothing else there. It's always been utilized as a residence, and there's no commercial use or no other use of any type on the property. So when we came time to actually do our public notices as such and proceed further, you know, we only noticed based upon Lot 76 and Lot 77, all right? So Eileen called me today and said when they were looking through the notices, I had not notified people who were 200 feet from Lot 80, and that's because we don't have an application regarding Lot 80, okay? Just want to make sure everybody understands.
But we're not going to do Lot 80?
We're not doing 80? We're not doing the other lot, which, the other residential lot, which is 60.02, which is in the rear and is called the Anderson House and works off of a long driveway in the back that goes to the residential area.
Just to clarify, Lot 80 and then the other one, those are both residential?
What single-family residences have been since they were built and remain so today.
Matt, we need a non-conformity there for that?
So we never requested or required a non-conforming certificate for Lot 80 as a residential unit. The township very rarely gets involved in the residential properties. We don't do CO inspections at time of sale. You can rent even on a non-conforming property. The only time it would come up is really if there's any proposed expansion, and they'd be in front of this board anyway, at the time they could validate the pre-existing non-conforming use then to get the D2 variance versus having to require the D1. So we never required anything for the residential houses on Lot 80.
So basically, they would not have to come back for those?
No.
Unless we change it to a different use, and then of course, obviously, we'd have to come back to it. Or expand it as such. That's correct. You're correct. Okay, so...
He did notice for Lot 76, correct?
Yes. Both 76 and 77. Yes.
The rest of it...
It's just those two. There was all proper notice done with all of that.
Mr. Mallon, your letter deals with all of those properties, correct?
That's correct. My letter basically covered everything. There was a lot of changes since then. I just didn't do it. I didn't do another letter. I just left it. Bill says, "We'll handle it at the meeting. We'll just take it out," which is fine.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of extra in my letter that's not a proposal we're going to hear tonight.
Yes, that's why I wanted to clarify.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. So as I said, we're left with Lots 77 and 76, and again, I told you, we divided it to appliances. The Lot 77 is one building, one use. It's been used for warehouse-related uses, and Mr. Metz will testify and give you that information shortly, since he purchased it in 1997. He purchased it then, and he purchased it from Leon's Farm, and Leon, if you go back to the history of the property, that's Leon's Farm, Inc., I'm sure I should say it's a corporation. You go back, you go back on it as such, and he had other entities, and he and his wife owned the property for a while, so for a long period of time. He had owned the property prior to 97, and he, once we sold, he sold us the property, he moved out from the use of the warehouse, and we've got other tenants in that. So I would like, if I could at this time, to have Mr. Metz sworn, we'll have him testify as to Lot 77, okay? And then I have the planner who also did some research, and she'll give a small amount of testimony on it also, again, to establish the continuing use of that property as a warehouse, assembly, distribution use, continuing uses over the years as such. And so, and then if we get done with that one, we'll get to 76, and we'll do that separately. Okay?
Mr. Mayor, can we have all your witnesses?
Yes, please.
Mr. Ray Vance, please. Just swear that the testimony of this evening, the whole truth, and the truth about yourself. Allison, starting with you.
Allison Coffin, CO FFIN, professional planner.
Larry Metz, MBTZ.
Very good. Thank you all sworn.
Thank you. All right. You're going to testify.
You can sit at the table.
Can you hear me?
Yep, there's a mic.
Wait a minute.
Oh, they're not out.
I'll get them.
Oh, boy.
While we're doing that, we had made a submission of this package. Did you all get a copy of it? Eileen indicated was sent out, right? Yes, you all...
Agenda package.
Okay. All right. We're going to follow the first part of that package, which at the bottom of it says Block 144, Lot 77, and we will be testifying from the materials that are in there, which is all the background material. Larry, first, would you please indicate what your relationship is to the property?
Yes, I'm a partner in the ownership of the property, L&amp;M Management Company.
And who are the other partners?
The other partner was my brother who passed away about a year or so ago, and his wife now is the remaining partner.
And other than your brother and you as such, has there been no other people involved with this since you purchased this property? And when did you purchase this property?
We purchased this property in 1997, and we've owned it continuously since then.
Okay. And again, on the picture that's up there as such, it is solely the building on the left, is that correct?
Yes.
And that's on a parcel that's approximately 15 acres, I believe?
Something like that, yes.
Yeah.
It goes back beyond, behind the building.
And all the balance of that property is vacant land, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So at the time that you purchased it, how was the, what was the, how was the property being used?
It was, it was being used as a warehouse and distribution assembly. There was a cabinet maker in the building at the time, Carrera Cabinet Maker. They were in the building when we bought it, and they moved out shortly after that, within a year or so.
And apparently, they had been there since 1990, is that correct?
They had been there, there were two different cabinet companies there, but yes, it was a cabinet shop for quite some time before that.
And the cabinet...
Back into the '80s, actually.
I'm sorry. The cabinetry, when you're saying that, that they were basically an assembly and a distribution?
That's correct.
Okay. They didn't run a retail from there. They basically constructed the cabinets, stored the materials, and then...
That's right.
Sold from there to people who installed them as such?
Yes.
That's correct. All right. Now, they remained in the premises, so they were there before 1997, when the ordinance changed. They remained in the premises to where?
So I would say they were there maybe a year after we bought it, and then they vacated.
Okay.
Within the first year, they vacated.
Okay. And then the property stayed vacant for a period of time, is that correct?
It was vacant for maybe a year or two, yes.
Okay. And then what was the next company that moved in?
The next company that moved in was Big Wheel Tire, Wholesale Tire Company.
And how did they use the building?
That was a warehouse for tires, mainly car tires, and they sold them wholesale, distributed them to other dealers.
Okay. So they warehoused then, and they distributed, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And they stayed in the place till when?
They were there till 2006.
And then who was the next tenant?
The next tenant was Rex Lumber Company out of Englishtown, and they did a similar thing. They warehoused moldings and lumber parts and distributed from there.
Okay. So they had their main lumber yard in Englishtown, as you say?
Right.
But this was like a specialty you had then?
Right. Yeah, they prepared moldings and so forth. They would bring them here, prepare them, and then take them back to Englishtown and distribute them from here and from Englishtown, actually.
Now, attached to the materials that were submitted, you submitted several items with that to back up your testimony as such. Could you sort of run through them? There's only a couple of them.
Yeah, the first one I have is the, from Big Wheel Tire. This was dated, I don't know what the date is on here. It's hard to see. But this was an application for the CO, for Big Wheel Tire. That was granted. I have the inspection, which is also hard to read if it's very faint on the copy.
Okay. But again, that was disclosed. That's exactly what it was, and it was expected by one of the departments of the township, whichever one at that point, and...
It was inspected. CO was granted, and then it was fire marshal inspected it annually.
And is that true that regarding all of the ones we're going to talk about tonight, that the fire inspector comes in to each of the units at least annually, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And have you had any violations?
No. I don't believe on that building we've had. And if they were, I don't recall any, but if they were, they were minor, and they were always corrected and issued a certificate.
Okay. Then the next item you have is an application for change in commercial occupancy, and this is dated August the 14th, 2006, and the existing tenant was shown as Big Wheel and the new tenant as Rex Lumber Company. And what did that indicate?
Well, that was the application for the certificate of occupancy. It showed that Big Wheel as the prior tenant and Rex as the incoming tenant, and that was okayed at the bottom of that page. It's signed off, and then the CO, there was a certificate of occupancy for Rex Lumber, I believe. Yeah, the last page is the CO for Rex Lumber.
Okay. So, okay, so now Rex Lumber stayed there until this year, is that correct?
Yes. Yeah, they moved out at the end of 2017.
And what's proposed to move in there now?
We have a tenant proposed, we have a signed lease, and he's ready to move in. It is strictly warehouse and distribution, similar use. He imports some sort of mini vehicles, and he assembles them here, not in this building, but he assembles them in another warehouse, I believe it's in, I don't know, I'm not sure if it's Freehold or Howell Township. And he wants to use this as a warehouse of parts and then ship them over to the assembly warehouse where they are, they're a current tenant there, and he assembles them over there.
And is he also indicating that depending upon what, how much space does he needs there, that he may also bring some of the finished products back for warehousing here?
That's possible.
And then distribute them?
Distribute from there.
Okay. So is it your testimony then that since you purchased the property and for the use that was there at the time and had been there for quite a few years, that this property has continuously, this building on this property has continuously utilized for warehousing of one type or another?
Yes. Warehouse, distribution, assembly.
Matt, what made this property...
So when the CCO application was received, it was for a use not permitted in the zone. I looked back in the history of the property. There were never any board cases, so without site plan applications or a variance, my question is, you know, how did this site get to be here? Based on the MLUL, you know, my requirement at that point, because me offering an approval at that point is, in a way, confirming the non-conforming use. It's not permitted in the zone. If I approve it, I'm pretty much saying, well, you must be pre-existing non-conforming, and I don't have the power to do that. So that's why I brought them here. I do have some supplemental information as to the zoning of the property throughout the last few decades, as well as the use is permitted. A lot of the timeframe is focused on the '90s, and that's for good reason. Our first several sets of ordinances, 1957, '64, '68, and our zoning maps, the property was zoned highway business. In 1979, it was switched to highway commercial. In 1989, highway development. And then 1997 to highway development one, which is the current zoning. From 1957 through, in 1957, warehousing was strictly prohibited in the zone, in the highway business zone. 1979, warehousing was not listed as a permitted use, so it was determined not to be permitted. In 1986 was the first mention of light warehousing and light storage of goods and materials such as furniture, clothing, glass, metal products, household goods, food products, and the like, provided that outside storage and storage of hazardous materials was not permitted. 1986 had that language in it, as did 1992 and 1994. The ordinance changed in 1997 again, and warehousing was not included. So safe to say from 1986 through the early parts or, more, 1996, it was permitted. So based on the proof presented, the fact that there was warehousing there in the '90s, early '90s before the 1997 change, I would concur that it was pre-existing at that time and legally there at that time.
There won't be any outdoor storage?
No. It never has been.
Could you refer to the record?
Yep.
Excuse me, Matt. Matt, could you just, so from 1986 to 1996?
So 1997 was the ordinance change?
So warehousing was approved?
Was permitted from 1986 through some point 1997. When the new ordinance came in, it was not listed anymore.
They refer to the...
Yeah. Okay.
That's all I have from Mr. Metz on this one. Ms. Coffin has a few things that she's looked at the maps and stuff, and I don't know...
Board members, do y'all have any questions?
No.
Professionals?
Yeah, I have a question. All right, just focusing on that couple of years in between.
Make sure your mics on.
Helen, it's not on push button.
Better? Okay, yeah, much better. Focusing on that time between when it was a cabinet shop and then became the tire, I guess, facility. You said it was vacant for a couple of years. Was it, I just want to establish for the record that it wasn't abandoned, that the use wasn't intended to be discontinued, so any evidence about, for example, utility bills or if it was always presented for sale or occupancy as a warehouse and building during that time?
It was always presented for occupancy. The timing just wasn't good for leasing.
Great.
Utilities were always on, taxes were paid, it was actively marketed for rent.
Mr. Chairman. Hey. Mr. Metz, you're not coming to any sales here, though, correct? You're just using warehousing?
Yes.
Good. Thank you.
When were these buildings constructed? Did we know?
Actually, you can go back on yours. How far back do you go on this one with the ownership?
Well, I go back to the '80s.
The township has several records. We have some subdivision site plans from very early on. These buildings showed up on our earliest map, which was 1968, so well before that.
And what were they used at that time?
Well, it was all...
1968 was the first site plan we have. Lot 77...
Lot 77, we don't have much records on because there was no board cases. So, Lot 76 was where the buildings were shown, and it shows some of the neighboring properties having buildings on it. So, nothing specific on 77 as to the uses.
I do want to point out that if you look at the property on its history, Leon Sandowitz and Francis Sandowitz's wife owned the property from '53 to '63. And then it appears that Leon's farm, he converted it and made it a corporation, for whatever reason as such, and owned it from '63 to '97. So, it's probable that this property goes back, and that sometime within this, he built the building, most logically somewhere around '63 or early 60s or so. Or converted from something else. But that's it?
Mr. Mallon, I'm going to kind of pick your brain. Am I not mistaken, didn't they used to sell eggs there? Way back, you know, I wasn't there at that time.
I don't remember, I mean, I came in around '86, '85, '86. We never had any issue with the engineering department when I was a tentative engineer on this. So, I can't say I don't remember.
I remember Stanley talking about the eggs.
Stanley?
Yeah, he had pictures of them. That and the other egg farm, now it's got cotton.
You know that information?
Yeah, well, you're right, egg farm, probably.
Yeah, there was, there was, there's some indication that there was, it was a farm type of use as such, and the building was part of that.
Right, just keep in mind, back then, Route 9 was only a single lane each direction.
That's correct.
You want to bring Ms. Coffin up?
Yeah, sure, please, thanks, Lucy. Allison, I would just ask, have you joined a?
Yeah, for the record, we need a qualified.
Please.
Hi.
Hi.
My name's Allison Coffin. I am still a licensed professional planner, and I still have my AICP certification.
What school did you go to?
Boston College.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Allison, I'd ask you to look in to see what you could, supplement anything addition that you were able to find, and I could just ask you to supplement the record down if you would.
So, one of the things I did to review the history of this site, I went to a website called historicariels.com, and I'm sorry, I was not able to figure out how to print the aerials to bring to you, but I did review the aerial history for this property, starting in 1930 and going to the present day. In 1931, the lot was vacant. In 1953, there was evidence of farming activity on the site. This property was cleared, and there was what appeared to be chicken houses to the lot to the north. In 1963, there was no change for Lot 77. In 1970, this structure appears on the aerial. So sometime between 1963 and 1970, this structure was built. But of course, I couldn't tell from the aerial what it was used for, the chicken houses were still there. In 1972, there's no change. Again, in 1979, '86, and '95, there was no evidence of change. In 2002, the driveway accessing this property changed color from white to a dark material. So I don't know if that means it was paved, or if sand was replaced with crushed stone. And there has been no change in the aerial view of this property since 2002. My conclusion between this and listening to the applicant's testimony is that we have a structure that was placed on this lot probably about 1968. We don't know what it was used for until 1990, when we have evidence that it was used for warehousing, distribution, and light assembly. And that use has continued until the present day. Given that that use was permitted in 1990 and rendered nonconforming as a result of an ordinance change in 1997, it would appear that for Lot 77, it's a pretty simple case, that the structure is a preexisting nonconforming use, and the board could issue that certificate.
Helen, do you have any?
Nope, agreed.
Mr. Mallon?
The only comment, just so the board understands, when the ordinance changed and did not permit it, the applicant had one year to appeal to the zoning officer. That's the only time he has the power to declare a letter of nonconformity, have one year. After that, then falls to this board. Just so the board understands that, that's the only time, when the ordinance changed, the applicant has to make petition, and the zoning officer can make that decision.
Questions, Ms. Allen?
I just have one question. In the event that this moves forward and gets approved, would there be any hazardous materials being stored there, you know, while they're building vehicles?
All of the leases have an anti-hazardous waste, anti-hazardous material factor in it. The, it is supervised by Mr. Metz and his company, as well as the other properties that they manage as such. But on top of it, there's a yearly inspection by the fire marshal as such. He's looking for those kind of things, and we have never had a problem with that. In fact, to the best of our knowledge, through both of these lots, there was nothing there with any kind of hazardous material.
That answers that, thank you.
Any other questions?
That includes Lot 77, and I would request that you act on that one, and then we can move to the other one as a separate, because that's got its own history, you know?
This time I'll take a motion to open the public.
Motion to open to public?
Second. Second, please. We're ready?
All right.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Close. At this time, we'll take questions and comments from the public if there is need of this application. Seeing none, can I have a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Motion by Mr. Armada? Second about Mr. Armada, call in favor?
Aye.
Close. Want to make a closing?
I think as far as Lot 77, as testified by both of my witnesses as such, it establishes what is required under the statute and the case law to determine that this is a valid, preexisting, nonconforming use. And as long as we continue to utilize it for the same, similar warehouse uses as such, will remain so. If we change to some other use, such as retail, commercial, or something of that nature, or we change the size of the building, or do something more that requires approvals for land use approvals, it would lose that status. But we believe, we believe, the history of this shows that it meets all the qualifications.
Professionals, any further?
The only thing I would say is just, should the board look favorable upon this? It's only for warehousing? That's the only thing that we would give a certificate on? Okay, Bill?
Yes, it's warehousing.
Okay, all right, thank you.
It's warehouse, it's warehousing, assembly, distribution, that's what it's been.
Well, right, well, usually when you're housed, you distribute, so.
Yeah, I mean, if you have a warehouse, you've got to do something with the stuff that's there, so that's what I'm trying to say.
But just so I understand, that's all it is, that's all the board would approve?
Distribution and assembly.
Helen, do you have any further? Matt? Pleasure of the board.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this application. It's been a longstanding business for many years in the town, and it is preexisting, nonconforming, and I don't see any problems with it whatsoever. So my motion is to approve.
Motion by Mr. Armada, second about Hugh's. We have a roll call, please.
Yes, you may. Mr. Armada?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Based on testimony on record, this is warehousing, distribution, use, yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you. If at all possible, we don't have anything else on for time, but we'd like to go into the second building, which is Lot 76, which is more complex because there's more uses than, which we'll go over with you in a second.
This was properly noticed, correct?
Yes.
And they were noticed as two separate applications.
Oh, sorry.
All right.
Based on previous witnesses?
Thank you.
We're good with that, right?
Mr. Metz, let's start off, what you see up there now is just this lot. Avenue 9 is to your left, and as you can see, the building is right up to the highway because it preceded the widening of the highway. Now, would you please explain what's on the property? Because there's a lot of boxes also around which are trucks by itself.
Well, what you see in the parking lot are mostly vehicles, trucks, or cars. There's basically, the main front building that you see closest to the left, which is closest to the highway, is a combination of uses. The front half of the building, closest to the highway, has always been used for some sort of retail or offices, which are permitted use in the zone. So, the sketch that you have in the packet shows the front half of the building with no marking. And that, we're not asking for any change there, that'll remain as retail or office use, which is permitted. The back half of the building is a combination of a couple warehouses, and there's a small building right just to the rear of the main building, which is, it looks like it's attached, but it's really separate. That little, yeah, exactly. That's a separate building, which has also been used for warehouse, distribution, assembly over the years. And then there's the rear building, which is a warehouse building as well, and that has always been used for that use, warehouse, distribution, and assembly.
Are these more detailed?
Yes.
Okay, so in the first, the front building, how many different warehouse units are there in that front building and the small one that's attached to it?
Well, the front is the retail section you're talking about?
No, in the overall portion, right there, which is.
Yeah, currently, there's, currently, there are two tenants in the rectangular portion of the building there on the back end. And then there's a section of the building just north, which is kind of an add-on to the building. Yeah, that section is currently vacant, but there have been tenants over the years that use it as warehouse and distribution. The lower portion there, the main building, well, that one currently is vacant as well, but that was always a similar use as well. The big portion that you're pointing at now is a 10,000-foot warehouse, and there's currently two tenants in there. There's a carpet distributor that has the, kind of hard to explain, he has the rear 5,000 feet plus 2,500 feet that comes out on the south side of the building. And then there's a second tenant in the other 2,500 feet on the back end of the building, which faces the parking lot. And they all do the same, you know, similar kind of thing.
So they're all warehouse, warehouse storage uses there?
Yeah, they're warehouse, and the carpet place does, you know, sell some product out of there. It's a warehouse and a, you know, like an outlet type, kind of a carpet outlet type store.
And they distribute there.
And they distribute carpet from there as well, from the warehouse. Yeah, it's all a warehouse, but it's.
Okay, so that building, and then you have the rear building, which stands all by itself.
What's in between the rear building and the front? There's a little.
Yep, that's the third one, last thing we're talking about. Go ahead, now, if you want. Okay, that's a, that's a house, it's a residence. It's a two-family upstairs and downstairs residence that has always been there since we purchased it. You know, it's two tenants, like I said, up and down.
All right, let's go to the back building now.
The back building is, again, a warehouse building. Currently, on the north, the north two-thirds of the main building there, you can see part of it steps back a little bit, it's a smaller area. But the main portion of the building is 10,000 square feet. Currently, 7,500 square feet of that is a tenant that they blend herbs for the food industry. They blend them in one section, warehouse them, and distribute them in the northern 5,000 feet of it. And they actually moved in a short while ago. Well, they took over a preexisting business that was there.
Same type of business, right?
Same type of business, was in 2,500 feet. They took over that business and expanded it into the 5,000 feet. And then the other 2,500 feet of that building is a heating and air conditioning contractor. He stores materials there, does some sheet metal work there, and he's been there for quite a while. And then the portion that kind of steps back from the building is New Jersey granite, and they make granite countertops. And then the rest of the, the most subtly part of it is really just storage, kind of cold storage.
So the granite company, they cut the stuff, they store it there, and they, do they actually fabricate anything? What's that?
Yeah, they fabricate the countertops there. They cut them and grind them and fabricate them there. And they don't sell to the public, they sell mostly through, I think, decorators and designers and so forth.
Okay, so it's not a store?
No.
It is, so they store the materials, they cut them, store them, and then sell them out to designers and/or installers?
Right.
For kitchen design as such. All right, now, let's go back a little bit. You bought this property from Mr. Worth, is that correct? Lenny Worth?
Lenny Worth, in 1984.
In 1984, this whole property as such. Has there been any changes to the building? Have you added any buildings? Have you made modifications to the exterior, to the footprint of the buildings or so?
No, the footprint hasn't changed at all.
Okay, so those buildings are what they were back then, other than you maintained them and did what you had to do with that. What about, what about the two-family house on there? When you purchased it, was it a two-family house at that time?
Yes.
Okay, and prior to that, did Mr. Worth live there at the time that you purchased it?
He did, when he owned the property, he had his shop in one of the back buildings, and he lived, I believe it was on the first floor.
Okay, and the second floor was rented?
Was rented, yes.
Okay, and do you have any idea how long a period of time that was for? Do you know?
Well, he had lived there for quite a while, I know. Because he's owned this property for, I don't know when he bought it, I don't have the record of when he bought it, but he owned the property for many, many years.
Yeah.
And he always lived in that house.
Yep, okay, he's got a very interesting history, I'll tell you later on if you'd like to know about Mr. Worth, if any of you don't know him. I knew him fairly well. Okay, so I would indicate to you, if I look in the, along the highway in the front, at one time, there was another building in the front, wasn't there, on the next lot? Just to the south, just to the, yeah, to the south.
On Lot 75, which is.
Yeah, right there, right there.
When I bought it, there was a house there which was demolished years ago. There's nothing on that lot now.
And it has not been anything, you've not built anything there?
No.
So that lot is a vacant lot, just so you know. But when we, when he bought it, there was, there was something there at the time as such. Okay, now, you've indicated.
Can I interrupt?
Sure.
Is there any outdoor storage here?
No.
No.
Is there containers on the ground?
There are a few containers, the carpet place has a couple of containers there. There were a few additional ones that the herb company had that had been removed. But yes, the carpet place does, I think, have a couple of containers there still.
Southern there is outside storage. That would be considered outside?
Is that considered outside storage? If he's got to get rid of it, we'll make him get rid of it. They've been there for years.
Matt, Mr. Mallon?
I've never had to think about storage inside a container being considered outside storage, but normally, containers by ordinance are only temporary, even on a commercial site. A few 60 days at a time, somebody permits a year. So if it is a permanent fixture, then usually, if anyone's requesting it, we would send them for site plan for that.
Well, we will, we will still notify him if that's what.
If they've got to be removed, we'll make them remove them. He has some extra storage, there's nothing outside, but those containers. He, he has some extra storage, there's nothing outside, but those containers, right in the center of the, the rear parking lot, uh, it looks like there's five containers there that back up to each other, up, 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 yeah, right, right there. And if they're not permitted, they've been there for years, I know, but if they're not permitted, we'll require them to move them.
Hey, that would be up to Mr. Howard.
Okay, we'll work it out with him. Um, now, actually, actually, so, so with what you've indicated there, so you've submitted again another package, and, and if you look, the third page of, of the materials that we gave you indicates that there's actually 10 units in those two buildings of, of, of storage areas as such, and then the house, which is separate. Um, and, and, and there's a history attached here, uh, of, of the uses since 1997, as of when he bought it, I'm sorry, since he bought it in 85, okay, effectively, uh, there is all backup materials as to the uses on it, and the backup, as to the uses since 1997 on, when, when the, when the warehouse use was, was there. Uh, but these uses, I mean, if you want, we can go through each one of them. I, I didn't think you'd want to do that, but if you look, there's all sorts kind of certificates of continued occupancy, if we don't have the certificates, we either have copies of the lease that disclosed it, or, or, um, applications that were filed, uh, or whatever, okay? To be honest with you, um, we never thought we'd have to go back this far to, to find things, and so therefore, some of the records are not as good as they, you know, if, if we knew, we would not be here for this.
There are, there are, actually, there are COs for most of them, but there are a few that I couldn't find the, the actual COs, uh, for whatever reason, sometimes the township didn't mail them out, or I didn't go get them, or whatever, but I have all the applications, the leases, there's, there's proof of each tenant having been there. Uh, but there, the majority, the vast majority are, I actually have the COs in, in that packet.
So, so since 1985, there's been some type of warehouse use?
Yes.
On this lot?
Again, the ordinance changed in 1997, correct?
Yes, so this is the same zoning as the property to the north, uh, there was a window from 1986 to 1997 where warehousing was permitted.
Mr. Harrod, are, are all the uses there currently are zoned for the use?
No.
No. The warehousing and the residential are non-conforming.
Okay, and there's one other question, at some point in time, I have a letter from the Environmental Commission on lot 76, should we address that?
We can. I don't know where it is right now, but, whatever, I think I have it, do you have it there?
There, there are no wetlands on 76, I have a, uh...
You have an L O I?
I have an L O I, uh, from the state.
Because they, uh...
They did submit the L O I.
We did submit it, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I didn't see, I just see the letter from the Environmental Commission.
No, you're, you're correct, there was at one point, showed on some of the map, there was a small area, but when we had the, the E P come in to look at, they ruled it was not a wetland, and there is a small on night, on, on blocks, on lot 77, all the way up in the north, doesn't affect the use at all.
Okay, good, thank you. But the, the house, is there someone living there now?
Yes, they've been there for quite a while.
Could you tell them who's, what, how long they've been there?
That's a separate one, it's a...
Number one, we have to see. Uh, it looks like one has been there since 2005, and the, that's the upstairs and the downstairs, uh, I've had three, basically three different tenants, the current tenant's been there since, uh, 2009.
In terms of the residential use, I mean, that's probably the one sticking point in this application, uh, in researching the zoning, um, for residential uses, 1957 through 1979 allowed single-family dwellings. Uh, in that ordinance, there was also language about converting single-family to multifamily, um, but it didn't, in no way permitted that use at that time, so for the conversion to have been legal, if it happened dur, after 1957, would have had to have been there before 1957. Um, single-family dwellings were permitted in the zone up until 1979, uh, multifamily, though, uh, is not in the ordinance until be, before our ordinance, which would be 1957. So the multifamily aspect of this is the sticking point, uh, at this point.
I think the planner will give a little more based upon what you could see in terms of, regarding that.
And whenever you say sticking point, it should be a single-family residence?
Multifamily housing was never permitted use in the zone, ever. It would have had to predate it our first ordinance, which was 1957.
Good very well made.
So technically, Mr. Mallon, they, they would need a variance for that, correct?
For the multifamily, yes, unless they can show that it was existed prior, but, uh, I don't think that we can find any records, and neither could Matt, on, on the two-family. I think there's enough supporting that one family was there, but to get the two-family, they would have to come for a variance.
And, and looking at the past site plan subdivisions, all the, the cases that are on this site, we have two-story frame dwelling as early as 1968, and that's the first record we have of the dwelling on the property. So we, we established the dwelling was there in that timeframe, absolutely, um, within the single-family use aspect of the ordinance, um, it's just the, the multifamily is never accounted for.
So that's 1968?
Correct. Yeah, and that's just the first showing of it, it could have obviously been there much earlier.
So the owner could have...
It was always, it was always a two-family house, though, I mean, there's two distinct apartments, two kitchens, two, you know, it's two, two bedroom apartments that have, you know, that, that seems to me have always been there. It wasn't a, doesn't look like a conversion, because there's a full kitchen upstairs and a full kitchen downstairs.
I, I understand that, but to, to give a certificate, I, I, it would have to predate in 1957 ordinance, correct? It would have been established in as a multifamily residence.
Well, we, we...
This, this point in time, you know, it would require variance for that, that...
I, he was, Matt was talking about 1968, but the map, the last map we could go back and find, this shows the house on it in 63. Now, it doesn't show, we don't have anything before then at this point, but it does show five years earlier that, that the house, that house is located there.
No, I know, but it was probably a single-family, I think.
Well, I don't know.
I think it was ever a single family.
And Lenny Worth was a single man, okay? He was never married, never had any kids, he, he lived there, I, I can't say I knew him back then, uh, because I didn't become an attorney until 1970, but during the 70s, I represented him at times, uh, and, and was very familiar with the property also as such, and he always, he lived, he lived downstairs, he lived there alone, and it was somebody upstairs, but again, I, I don't know when that started, because I wasn't even around there.
Who lived?
Well, we, we can try to go back, we, we can probably go back to try to find even on an earlier map whether the building was there before 1957, but it doesn't prove that it was, you know, a multifamily, I mean, there's no, we don't, nobody's got a record of that, that's the problem.
Excuse me, was there a separate entrance to the upstairs?
Yes.
Okay, but you, you kinda have that in the picture, it was there when it was built, or was it something that was added on?
Uh, no, it, it goes, you walk in the door, and there's, um, a separate entrance to the downstairs apartment and a stair going up to the second story apartment.
So it's internal?
What's that?
It's internal of the house?
It's internal, but it's right inside the front door. There's no, you don't walk into the house, you walk into a very small vestibule.
Okay.
You go into the downstairs apartment and then upstairs to the second floor apartment.
Let me, let me detract a second, this guy's, maybe he understands a little bit more about this. Mr. Worth was in a Nazi concentration camp in, in Poland, uh, I think it was the bad one, Dachau, whatever, it was, one of those, really a bad one, I remember that, he told me about it, he escaped, and, and he worked his way across Europe by every night burying himself in the ground, so that when the Germans came with the dogs and that, they would, the dogs wouldn't be able to find him, and that went on over a period of several months, he was living, eating bark from trees and grass, and, and, and he worked his way into Switzerland, uh, and then somehow got from there to come to the U.S. And, and he was a cabinet maker, and, and so he was able to start practi, he came to Holland, started practicing his craft locally, I'm not sure where exactly, and he wound up buying this little piece of property, this, where these buildings are. He built them, him, he built all of those buildings himself, and I say himself, he built them by himself, that's what he did. Uh, so, 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 you know, he, he wasn't great with records as such, uh, but, but that, that's why it is what it is, and that's why it, the way it's structured the way it is, because of this background.
And he, I mean, he, he lived very frugally too, he never would have, he never would have lived upstairs or downstairs.
You stated that there's a full kitchen upstairs?
Yes.
And a bathroom and all, all the facilities?
There's two bedrooms, a living room, a bathroom, and a kitchen upstairs, and the same thing downstairs.
And he wouldn't need all that for himself if he's got that downstairs, and he seems to live very close to the vest?
He did.
He was a penny pincher, I'll tell you that.
We can't establish, we can't establish paperwork in this case, that's the problem. Was, was there any building permit, as called, for the residential?
No.
God, no.
No, but every time it changed, we did get a C O for each tenant.
No, I, I'm not talking about that, I, the construction permit, when you built it...
We have no idea. I, I, I mean, really, you know, you're talking back, but there really wasn't a lot of organization for stuff that was going as long as, you're building a house, you built a house, that's what it was, you didn't have any plan back then. Uh, look, maybe the thing to do is, is if we could bifurcate that one bit from the rest of this, and, and then let us see if we can still find more information regarding the house, and if we do, we'll come back to you, you know?
You have a problem doing that?
No, it's worth a try, it's worth a try, I don't want to taint the whole thing by this one thing, but, but that's why I also, even though the single-family houses that are on the property in the other locations wasn't necessary to come in to you, this is unique, and that's why we were recognizing, that's why we wanted to discuss it.
Mr., hey, I want to talk to my professionals here.
Sure.
Mr. Mallon, do you have an issue, bifurcating and separating the residential from this?
I have no problem if the board wants to pursue that, uh, I think he's established that the residential is, was there, the problem is really whether it's two-family. And, and maybe he has to come back with some pictures of the home, something like that, so show the entranceway, unless the board members want to visit and look, but, you know, I mean, we're looking for some sort of proof, uh, obviously, was no building permits taken, Bill?
We don't know.
That we know of? You know, back then?
Ask Matt.
Yeah, I, I looked through the files, I've never seen building permits from before the 80s, so I, I don't think that far back we, we maintain those records.
Matt, do you check into real estate taxes, you know, when that house was built?
Um, I, I did not check on the residential use for, with the tax assessor, my understanding is that tax assessment doesn't validate, uh, a use in case law, is that correct? So, so I, I tend not to go that route, because it doesn't prove for or against a use, it doesn't make it valid.
I don't think the house is separate on the tax file.
Yeah, I, I...
I don't think it separates the house...
It wouldn't distinguish between a one-family and a two-family, it would just distinguish the year you started paying taxes.
On its own lot, it might, of the tax assessment, not that I would trust it still, but not, most likely not on this lot.
So, Mr. Tropley, it's not a problem to do that? If the board looks favorably...
The resolution, if it were to be approved, would show that the house is excluded and that the board has to hear a use variance application unless you can produce additional evidence. That would mean a third time here, but, um, if the board could give the, um, approval on a commercial use tonight, obviously, that would still leave the residential use in limbo until such time as the applicant comes back.
What I would ask, in, in following up on that regarding the houses, there are tenants that have been in there for a long period of time, we obviously don't want to kick them out, that's not right, but, but if in the meantime, before we come back either with the use thing or some proofs, some additional proofs to you, uh, you know, one of them was to leave, okay, on their own, or we booted them out because they weren't paying, so, uh, you know, we would not re-rent the second unit until something occurred to, to substantiate as such, but I don't, I don't want to hurt the people that are in there, I don't think that's fair, and, and there's no harm.
You couldn't, you couldn't evict them anyway.
Yeah, that would be up to code enforcement to take up, I, we have no intention of doing that, um, sans, sans a, a complaint, and then really...
Well, I think what the board is trying to do, if my board members can correct me if I'm not saying this properly, but we, we're trying to bring it into conformity. One, we can do with the certificate, the other one is gonna happen to be a variance at some point in time, if it's gonna remain a two-family house, you know, because that's all there is to it, even if the proofs are coming in, I don't think you're gonna get proofs past 19, you know, '70 or something, I don't think you're gonna, I'm not saying you can't, but I, I still want to try to get it into conformity for some reason, that way you never have to come out here unless you're checking the use of the water, so...
Does Allison have anything?
That's what I'm trying to do.
No, she's, she's, she can't go back, she's practically, is that, okay? That, that'd be, I'd be fine, we can move on with the rest of them and get those taken care of, that's what we have to turn over, because we've got some vacant places right now, we need to rent them, so...
Okay, um, is there any questions for this witness from the board? Any questions from the professionals? Uh, you want to bring this up?
Yes, well, she's done some work on it, so let me just have a...
You do not have to recall it.
Yeah, okay. She still has her life.
I haven't torn it up in the last 20 minutes.
Okay, so, so you did some more research on this property, and I don't think you...
I did.
How much time?
Uh, just like with the, the previous lot, I went back through the aerial history. In 1931, the lot's vacant, 1953, lot 76 was vacant, in 1963, the front building had appeared, but it was much smaller than its current configuration, and the residential structure had appeared, so that structure...
What year, '63?
'63. So between '53 and '63, that structure shows up, and by 1970, the foundation of the rear building is visible in the aerial, but it has no roof, and the front building matches its current configuration, and then by 1972, all the buildings are present on the lot as they currently exist, and there are no changes from 1972 until the present, just viewing the aerial history. My conclusion there is for would be that the multifamily house or the residential structure was constructed between '53 and '63, the mixed-use front building reached its current size between 1963 and 1970, and that rear warehouse building was constructed between 1970 and 1972. With the testimony from the applicant, it's clear that the warehouse use did predate the change in the ordinance in 1997, so that, that's fairly straightforward. As for the multifamily nature of that rear house, I don't have anything solid that determines when that, that began. The tax records did indicate that it's a two-family structure with two kitchens and two bathrooms, but tax records don't tell you when that, that began, so I do think it would be good to go back and see if we can find anything additional.
That's all we got.
Mr. Mallon?
Allison, just to repeat, you said the tax records show that it's a two-family?
I did pull up the property card to have a copy of for the, the residential structure.
But when, when, does it say when?
It says 1963.
1963?
It said that, that the house was, your build is 1963.
Okay, but it doesn't tell you it's two-family?
It, well, it does say that has, it has, it's multifamily, and it has two kitchens, but it's currently, currently.
Is it 1963?
Current.
Currently, the, the tax, the property card doesn't include a full history of the property, or it'd be pretty big.
I think it'd be safe, hey, I think we'd be safer to come back with that.
Yeah.
With further testimony, I'd probably go to a variance.
I've had cases like this in the past where we were able to prove it by way of the, the make and model, the cabinets was able to date the units, so we can look for things like that. like that.
That's what we can do.
Okay, so Mr. Mallon?
Nothing further. To me, I think they've established the warehousing part, the biggest, and they've established the single residential, but I don't think they've, it's the multifamily that's the problem. That's all I have.
I would agree with Mr. Mallon. I just have one question about how is the building divided internally, you know, so I...
It's upstairs and downstairs.
Oh, sorry, the front building, not the house, the main structure there, yeah.
Actually, the break is right there, where she just did that. You see that? The grayish roof is the warehouse area in the back of it.
Okay.
It's not exactly, to be honest with you, but it's, that's about as close.
They have this?
Yeah.
The, I don't know what exhibit it is, the summary of historic uses, the third page shows the division lines for all of the units. Okay. Yeah, sorry, our office didn't get that. But, yeah, so I'm mainly just asking in the sense of if that use was ever to expand, you know, obviously...
Break in here.
Okay.
Break in.
Okay. So it's pretty certain that within that, within that one building, the warehousing component, the non-permitted component would remain relatively similar in square footage, you know, going forward? Yes. Not without, well, we'd have to come back here to change. Right, that's my point, you know, if it was going to expand, how do we establish what it is now that it would be expanding from? But if it's, if it's a relatively kind of static building footprint inside, I think it's reasonable.
There are walls where they show there, so consequently, if the walls move, you'd have a problem.
Yeah. All right, I'm satisfied, thank you.
Mr. Howard?
I agree with the warehousing aspect. I think the residential we have to come back to.
Board members, do you have any questions on this call?
Aren't we worried about a, somebody putting in a kitchen in, you know, like a mother, mother-daughter setup? We're always worried about, once you put the kitchen in and a bathroom, that that establishes a second place to live. And we always say that when that person passes or whatever, you can't rent that out. So we've established that if you have a kitchen, bathroom, and living quarters, second, why would somebody put up all that and not consider that a two-family setup?
Well, I believe what we're trying to say is to bring it into conformity, because it's already there, we know that it's already there. We can't sense, the residential came in from after the fact of 1957.
Right.
Ordinance. You know, it came in, it did not forget, two-family, multi-family residence, period.
But this thing looks like it was built as a two-family, in common sense.
But it was built in 1963, that's after...
Oh, okay.
No, no, that's not necessarily true. It was built sometime between 1953 and '63, is that correct?
Correct.
It's not there in '53 on the map, it's there in '63. It doesn't mean that it was built in '63.
No, but what I'm saying is, if...
It may have been before.
If they don't, it may have, it may find the proof that it was built in a multifamily. And, you know, we have, but right now, how it stands, it's not permitted. It is not that it is a multi-family, it's not permitted at this point.
I'm really, I'm really relatively new at this, but wouldn't they have had to file for permits to build that building?
It dates a lot of the permits.
All right, so when they did any addition or anything, didn't they have to go to the township, and the township approve it in some method to make it a two-family or one? I don't, I...
And I can't speak to what our policies and practices were in the '60s and '50s, whether zoning approval was a prerequisite requirement like it is today. Not to speak of the previous owners, but work is done without permits every day in the town, especially internal work. There's a lot of ways it could go. And that's why, that's why the burden of proof is on.
When they came in for COs, don't the, they check, now, I know that the CO permits have changed recently, but when I first moved in, you had to have a CO that the township had to come in and give you a whole approval. Now it's only the fire department.
Yeah, for residential resale.
Residential, but prior, it had to be the whole town.
You still have to file, you still have to file an application, pay a fee, and get an inspection, which we did, which we've always done.
But see, that's not what's, he's got these COs, am I correct?
Yes.
He's got current COs, we understand that. But right now, it's a non-conformity use.
This was not a house that was built and then added on to. This was originally built. If you look at the house, you can, it was originally built as an up-and-down two-family house. It wasn't added on at some point.
It could have been built upstairs and downstairs for a two-story house, and then later on put the kitchen and stuff in. That's another way it could have done. But what I'm saying is, it's non-conformity at this moment. It's what we need to do. I don't want to hold your warehousing up.
No, I agree.
For the residential aspect, and to make you come in for variance for the whole thing. I want, let's separate that, let's move that aside, let's do the warehouse, take care of the non-conformity on the warehouse, and then come back at another time for the resident, because at this point, right now, I say it needs a variance. So if you can come back with proof...
That's fine. That's fine.
That's great. And we can do it that way, and then bring it into conformity. You know, and in that way, you won't ever have another problem unless you expand.
Terrific.
Mr. Danson, I agree with you, except I'd like to see, there's a 10-year window there, give them, you know, the benefit of doubt, and give them an opportunity to find out if that was built, say in '53, '55.
That's fine.
And then they wouldn't have to come back.
No, if, that's, if in fact...
Yeah, they're going to have to come back one way or the other.
Actually, we would come back, I would submit it to you, and you would evaluate whether you want us to come in and testify, but I would submit the proofs that we have that it was built in '53, as an example, if we find something.
That's fine, then we can issue a non-conformity certificate.
Right, okay, and then we could proceed now on the rest of it.
That's good.
Put that on hold.
Let me ask a question. Are there two electric meters?
Yes.
It's two addresses?
Two addresses, two electric meters, two heating systems, yes.
You just got to find a way to nail it down between '63 and '53.
Exactly. That's the whole thing. We can't go by...
I got it, I got it, I got it. I'm just, I'm trying to help. They can check with the post office, they can check with the electric company. The electric company has records that go back to '53.
That's not going to matter, unless it goes back.
That's not like that.
Goes back, yes, '53, yeah. That will be fine.
That's what I'm saying, is I'm trying to shed a little light where they could look.
That's a good point, and we will look there, we'll check.
And then that will decide if it needs a var, you'd still need to bifurcate it coming back.
I'm not suggesting they shouldn't.
Wait, just hang on. You'd still need to bifurcate your application, because it's either, if you got the proofs, then we go to certificate. If you don't have the proofs, we can go right into a variance.
That's correct, that's correct.
And that, that way we can address it one night.
And we can find out everything we can before then to see which way we go.
Take a look to see if, maybe by some luck, he might have put a cornerstone in with the date on it when he built the house. Some people do.
Good idea.
But anyways, okay, so let's move forward with warehouse, non-conformity, we could hit, need a motion to open to public.
Open to public, motion.
Check it.
Saved by Mr. O'Donnell. On the paper, opposed.
All right.
For the public wish to come forward.
That's okay. All members of the public need to come in, be sworn by me, place your name and address on the record, and questions only. Swear the testimony you'll be giving tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Yes. Name and address, please.
Sandra Saltley-Burtz, our road Farmingdale. I'm very confused about all these questions. This thing has supposedly been there since 1963 perhaps, or 1953. So my question is, there would have been censuses taken? The assessor would have gone in and reassessed the property? You rezoned it several times? So how are they paying taxes on this property? A warehouse, a house, outer-built, how, how is that being done?
All of the uses that are on that property are on the assessor's rolls, and they're all assessed. They have been. We've been paying taxes forever on that property.
Is it reasonable?
Is what reasonable? The taxes? The taxes are never reasonable, as you know.
No, I'm just asking, I mean, you had a point about the utilities.
Yes.
I mean, you have to put a deposit down to get the electric meter in.
We will, we will check and see if the JCPN L goes back that far with their records.
And voters. Maybe somebody was like 20 years old and registered to vote from that house. So their name would be in the voter records.
Do you think that means, you still have voter records from '53, you think?
Never know.
Well, you know, we can look.
Hey, listen, I probably registered to vote when I was 30, so that was like...
Two years ago.
Exactly. And I can call them up and say, how did I register? And they'll tell me, Democrat, bop-bop, okay. But I'm just saying, there's got to be information here somewhere. And I say, like they said, go look at the sink and the toilet. Forget the cabinets, is it like real old, like a century house in Ocean Grove? But like, this is nonsense. And you can tell them, if you don't want to let them have a two-family, then tell them to take the second bathroom and the kitchen out.
You don't want to take it out.
I know. I'm just saying, but, I mean, there's got to be answers here from somewhere. And I'm really concerned about the rezoning after, the thing has been there for, since the '40s, the '50s, and they get rezoned three times? I mean, what is it now, business or highway commercial?
Highway development one.
Highway development.
Highway development, one.
Yep.
And which is what that property on Route 9 in West Farms was, highway development one, right? And they re, I don't know.
We're not asking for a rezoning, and we're not asking...
No, I understand, I'm asking why was it rezoned three times in the last 30 years? That's what I don't understand. I'm going there Thursday. I am, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Russ.
Motion to close. We have a motion to close.
Motion to close.
Motion to close by Mr. O'Donnell.
Second.
Second by Mr. St. Clemente, on the paper.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, professionals, well, first off, Mr. Ayer, would you like to...
Yeah, just, just without, the property has been utilized, as indicated. That map up there is, actually divides it down, everything to the bottom, which is along Route 9, is permitted and has been. And I just want to point out to you that actually, that front part was actually the offices utilized by the DOT when they widened the highway as such. They had all their engineers there and everything, and that front part at that point was utilized as their offices as such, because I remember that part. But the back as such, if you grant us this, we will continue to be able to utilize it as it has been utilized, as you indicated. There are two vacancies right now that we're anxious to get people in on, and we can then proceed on this, and Matt will be happy, and everybody will be happy with where we go with it.
Professionals, any further?
Sure. Let me just make one final comment, that the statute is very clear. You know, I definitely applaud the township for being as helpful as possible, but the burden of proof is squarely on the applicant in these situations. So I just want to end with that.
And Mr. Mallon, and Ms. Zinkavage, I agree with everything you've said. And then members of the board, if you look favorably on the certificate of non-conformity, I certainly just want to mention again, not to wear out the topic, it excludes the residential use. And obviously, enough has been on the record, it could very well be that a use variance won't be required. Perhaps there will be some additional information, but a resolution of approval agreed by the board will not, will exclude and isolate the residential use at this point. That's all I have to say.
We agree.
Mr. Mallon?
I agree. I was just going to ask whether we were going to approve the residents as one-family, they'd have to come back to do two. So we'll just leave the residents out of it, we'll just do all the other uses, that's okay, okay. I just want to clarify what we're going to vote on, that's all.
Mr. Howard? It's a pleasure of the board.
Prior to what?
Members of the board, I'm going to make a motion to approve the warehouse, commercial aspect of this lot. Since it is not going to be expanding, nothing's going to be changed, this is pretty much the same as Lot 76. I make a motion to approve for the commercial use, and will exclude residential use.
For the warehouse use, not for...
The warehouse use, the commercial warehouse.
Second by Mr. St. Clemente, we have a roll call.
Say, say.
Mr. Amada?
Yes, I think under all the conditions stated, yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
I'm going to vote yes, too.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. St. Clemente?
Yes.
Chairman Danson?
The outside storage, the containers outside are to be addressed by Mr. Howard. The residential aspect, just left out of this warehouse, is a residential, it is non-conformity.
Thank you, motion carries.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, we've got a resolution. Yes, we do. Resolution, case number 88803, Fairview Equity LLC, resolution for open variance to construct a single-family dwelling with septic system, eligible voters. Amada Hughes, Mertens, O'Donnell, Roscoe, Mariotti, Marotti. Mr. Posh?
I have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second, second.
We have a roll call.
Mr. Amada?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
Motion carries, motion memorialized, thank you.
The other fellow in business in the board?
No.
Mari, I know, that's who it was, me. Can I have a motion?
Sherlock Holmes and I are good friends.
Can I have a motion adjourned?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Moretti.
Moretti.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all in board and chair, it's nine o'clock.